Council Study Session for May 14th, 2019. Like to call the meeting to order and remind everyone in the room to please mute or turn off your electronic devices. Item number two is public comment. This is the time of the evening where anybody in the audience who wishes to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda, they're welcome to come up to the podium and share your thoughts with us. Would anybody like to address village council this evening? Hi, Mike. How's it going? Good.
So, we're through due diligence period on 844 Spruce, and I just wanted to say that David and his team and you, Chris, did a great job helping us navigate everything we needed to navigate and get our title insurance in order. So, we're hoping the next year or so, we'll turn that, hopefully less, we'll turn that into another great spot for the community. So, thank you.
Awesome. And for those of you who don't know, Mike is involved with Minos, and they recently were pursuing the old Saboche Glass site, and they're now looking to convert that into a new restaurant concept.
Okay.
So...
So, it's gonna be another, can we name another restaurant?
No, Minos, same thing.
Yeah. You know, it's...
Are you looking at Mike's? Yes.
Calling it Mike, Mike and Eric's. Me.
You know, it'll be something different.
You're not gonna discuss?
No, we're gonna sit on our hands a little bit. Keep that under wraps.
It's getting terrible, it's...
Yeah.
Well, we're really happy to hear that something really special and fantastic is gonna happen there, and I know you guys will bring forth a great concept, and it'll just create more of those high-class problems that we're hoping to have in downtown Wenec like figuring out where to park all your customers, so... Thank you.
You could recreate that parking contest.
Well, we're working on it. We actually had it in the budget, and I hate to say we pulled it out this year because we're a little skinny on some of the stuff, but it'll be, it's in the queue, so by the time you guys are open, I'm pretty sure we'll probably have something more suitable there, hopefully. All right, anybody else like to address council? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and we'll move forward on our study item of the month, 93 Green Bay Road Draft Request for Proposals. The village has owned 92 Green Bay roads since 2001. The village council is exploring its options for the parcel, including potential redevelopment. As all of us here at the table remember, except for Jack, you weren't here at the time, we had a wide-ranging conversation on underutilized village assets throughout the village, and at that time, there was unanimous agreement that we should at least dip our toe in the water and get a better understanding of how the process works by throwing a little tidbit out onto the marketplace with this 92, 93 Green Bay road. So, here to review the draft is Assistant Village Manager Megan Pierce. Let her rip.
Hi, good evening. So, I have just, I have just a brief overview. Want to spend the majority this evening talking about your thoughts on the RFP and questions, so want to have more of a discussion, but just some introduction. The village acquired this lot at the southeast corner of Green Bay Road and Wenec Avenue in 2001. It's a gateway intersection, northern gateway to the village and its business districts. Parcel is 12,939 square feet. There is a building on it that previously housed a gas station and auto repair, and that's a little over 1,300 square feet. It's not in usable condition, which I think is something that Cindy Plant, our Economic Development Coordinator, has been in the building with our appraiser, not usable the way it is, it's not moving ready. There is paved parking area, which is what the village has been really using this for in terms of leasing it, depending on how you park vehicles and if you need access to that building. It's 15 to 20 vehicles on the property. It's currently zoned C1 limited commercial. Just for everyone's, you know, jogging memory, it's that blue highlighted portion on the aerial, it's that full odd-shaped lot, and you can see there are some cars parked on it next to the building in that, and then a picture taken earlier this year representing really what the lot looks like with not any cars parked on it. So, the village has been leasing it since 2002 through 2017. Fields Land Rover was the primary tenant of the property for its dealership, and then Nutria High School also leased the property during its construction for extra parking. Rent payments and property tax revenue since 2002 have exceeded the village's original purchase price. I think that was a question raised by the council when we last spoke about it. Given the property's key location, it was highlighted in both the downtown master plan and the 2020 comprehensive plan. You'll see those references included in the RFP. To date, the village has received approximately 20 inquiries from individuals and organizations interested in repurposing or redeveloping the property. So, we've been keeping a list of people that either call or email with interest about, you know, I'd like to do this, or, you know, what is the village doing with this property? So, based on when we talked to you in November, what we're coming back with is a draft request for proposals, and what you'll see here is sort of the bones of how that could work. Tonight, we want to get your thoughts on that and additional questions you might have, but submitted proposals would be reviewed by staff and council. We didn't put a lot of detail to that process. Is that something that could be worked out? Ultimately, could authorize the village manager and village attorney to negotiate an agreement with a selected individual or team. I think some of the important things to focus on in the RFP are the selection criteria and the goals. So, we focused on getting proposals that are creative and feasible. So, this isn't meant to just be a process to go through the steps and to get proposals, it's meant to try and elicit different ideas and get different people interested in the property, and for them to give us our thoughts, and then the village can, council can have a more robust discussion about what is of interest in pursuing. So, we would want to see projects that people show past development success, they have experience working in similar properties, quality of previous projects they've undertaken, that they're financially astute to undertake the project, that it would have a positive economic impact for the village, and that it would activate a key parcel of village The goals that you'll have seen outlined, to return the property to productive taxable commercial use that welcomes residents, students, and visitors to the business district, so this is in the Indian Hill Business District, but as mentioned, it's also a gateway into town and to our other business districts. Contribute to improve pedestrian accessibility at the intersection of Wenec Avenue and Green Bay Road, and also to include highly attractive architectural and landscape design benefiting the gateway location of the site as contemplated in the downtown master plan. This is another piece of the RFP that because it's a draft, we just included an outline of some key steps, but these would be exact dates to be determined based on the council's discretion and how quickly you wanted us to move, or if there's additional discussion required. We do recommend that there be a mandatory pre-bid site visit. Everyone who wants to bid on the project, come meet and come see the site. I think it's important for them to see the condition of the building and the layout of the parcel and the traffic around that intersection. We'd have submittal in response to questions. There'd be an evaluation process, which we'd need to put some more thought into what that would include. You'd select a team, and then you'd negotiate an agreement. So, very few words, longer process. From our perspective, depending on, this is, the draft RFP requires council input, but we could be ready to go with the process fairly quickly. If we start sooner, we're probably getting proposals later this summer. If it's a while before we get it on the street, then that will just carry that timeline down the road. And that's all I have from a formal presentation. Yeah?
Megan, early on in your presentation, you mentioned that the building was unusable. So, is there structural deficiencies that are claiming that the shell can't be reused as is, or it can somehow be integrated into something? Or is it simply not suitable for anything except a garage in its current condition?
I think that would probably need to be further explored depending on the use someone that was talking about. I think you could at least use a wall or two of the shell of the building, but I don't think it's an adaptive, an easy adaptive reuse of just coming in and putting some dividing, devising walls up. I think there's some major work to be redone.
Structurally?
I think it's in pretty rough shape.
Cindy's waving her hands.
There is no kind, there's no plumbing fixtures inside right now. There's no bathroom, no sinks, no anything. So, that was, was the first condition that the appraiser noted when we went toward the site with them. It's been sort of off-ball for some time, so we don't, I mean, we don't have a sense of what's happening structurally, but we know that there isn't plumbing infrastructure in there. And there's water service because it had the bathroom one time, but it's not longer than that.
No, it would be, it would be nice to know, and obviously, it's something that you'd probably look into a little bit deeper before people come in, because obviously, some people might be looking for an adaptive reuse of the existing building. And if it's just that there's not a washroom, well, that's, that's, you know, you can always put washrooms in, or heating, or air conditioning, or plumbing, or kitchens, or whatever, but obviously, if, if there's structural deficiencies that would prevent it from being used as a brick box for whatever, that's a whole different animal.
Yeah.
So...
I think the, I think some further exploration of that, I, that's one reason I think the site visit is important, just given having taken some of the inquiries we've received directly. Cindy and I have talked to a lot of those people over the last year or so, and I think there's definitely a curve of people that might just be wanting to move into a building, and there are people that might be willing to do redevelopment or adaptive reuse of the space.
Right.
So, I think understanding that what would be the base that's gonna need to be done to make it usable might be a reality checkpoint for some people that have been interested, per se.
Because, as we know, there've been two garages that have been repurposed in town already, and they both turned out really nice, so...
Right. But there's a lot of investment...
Oh, no doubt.
And I think, you know, education and understanding that goes along with that, and by getting some proposals and having people tour the site and see the site, I think will create some excitement and energy, and we'll also see what there is out there to offer.
Great. Thank you.
Megan, to, kind of to that point in the site visit, in the agenda, under the environmental section, we talked about the work that's been done so far, or the tanks that are, that we know are there, were there, but then, then the memo says additional environmental remediation may be necessary. Is that something that we should also be looking into? I mean, would, would not any prospective buyer or lessor want to know the status environmentally of that property?
It depends on...
Well, but no one's, no one's gonna make a deal with us without knowing.
You aren't gonna be able to sell the property without a phase two.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Is that our responsibility?
Yeah, usually.
To do that.
Was there any, when we bought the property, did we, can you draw? Had there been remediation of the property? It says one tank had been removed, and then 13 years later, they found three more.
That was when they did, redid the intersection.
Is there any, were any of the four leaking?
Not to my knowledge.
The reason I ask is they would end up having to dig the whole property out to remediate.
So, a substantial portion of that, of those additional tanks that were removed included contaminated soils, to the point where we felt, you know, we got the okay that we were done. We just don't know from the phase two how much more there may be, but we, I think we feel pretty good that most of the tanks are gone, almost all, if not all of them, but there could be other issues with respect to the building, you know, oil and other uses that were there. You just don't know until you get into it a little bit more.
Is there a chance to go backwards to Texaco? I think it was Texaco that owned it.
I don't know for tonight. Yeah, it was a long...
No, no, but they can still, I mean, there's still...
Jack, those, those lines of liability were cut off when...
When they were purchased.
...came into play.
Yeah.
So...
So, I do agree with the discussion. It almost seems like we should get to the...
Sorry, the university should...
We should get to the point where we've got the kind of letter of an NFR with no further remediation. Otherwise, anyone coming in is gonna have a convention.
Right.
So, maybe find out how long it takes to get that NFR, and what tests or reports we have to go through.
In the phase two.
It'd be nice to have that done, otherwise, that could get anywhere with the buyer.
Right. I agree.
Well, is that something that would hold up the process?
Oh, yeah.
Or could we do that? I mean, can we put out for RFP before we have that and work on it while people are working on their proposals, so that we can do it on a parallel track? But, I mean, Bob is asking the right question. That was the same question I had, is the environmental issues. I don't know why we would have bought it, but I wasn't on the council then, so...
Fire away, Penny.
I sent you, no... Sorry, I sent, and I apologize, I didn't realize you were looking down this, I sent it to David instead, which, so, I'm so sorry. As I was working through this today, I was at town all weekend, so I didn't have a chance to get to it until today, but I was on the council and on the plan commission when this whole thing came up, and actually, considering the Indian Hill portion of the business districts was what actually drove rewriting the whole comprehensive plan. But there was, you know, a really serious conversation about the functionality of, of the whole Indian Hill district as a unit, and in terms of how it served, you know, served the, the different stakeholders that use it. I also lived down there for 15 years, so I really, you know, had a strong sense of the strengths and weaknesses of the district. And at that point, actually, there were, virtually all of the corners were either gas stations or, you know, parking lots, or, you know, White Hen Pantry was there at that point, but it was all really automotive-driven. And the, that whole intersection was configured differently because the setbacks, everything was set way back. It was just, it was, it was a really different feel and function, you may remember from way back when, in terms of, yeah, how that was. And it was, there were a lot of teams that congregated there, the White Hen Pantry, I mean, a lot of people sitting around and no place to go, they were kicked out of the neighborhood. And so, they would just sit, sit on the, you know, walls, they would sit on the, you know, on the, the sides of the, the parking spots at White Hen. It was, they were really hanging out there, and, and so, and the garage there was a real eyesore. It was really bad. I mean, it's not great now, but it was really bad then. So, as part of the 2020 plan, it was identified as a parcel to, for the village to purchase, so it could then direct. And at that point, it was really thinking that they'd use it as a park, someplace for, you know, too, there was a bus stop there, I think, at that point, I think the bus stopped there, and, you know, they could hang out there and not bother people in the parking lot of the White Hen, and, and not bother people over at the, at the park.
What year was that?
That was in the late eighties, early nineties, and there was a lot of, yeah, so that was, that was sort of the vibe of the district at that point. So, when the, that business went, they moved, and, you know, they, they wanted to relocate, and so the, the village blocked them out.
Some mechanics?
It was, yeah, yeah, it was a garage, right. It was a repaired garage. And so, the real point was, at that point, was beautification, get more green space, get places for people to be in, in that area, and there wasn't a thought at that point about redevelopment. It was really more as, as a park space and a gateway. You know, once again, a lot of people come into town for Nutria and have no idea where it is, and, you know, again, thinking about sign it to me. So, that was the thought back in the nineties when that was included as part of the comprehensive plan. So, I just kind of want to give you all a little history, and that was, that was the, the thought behind it. And so, you know, it's, to me, it's really interesting that it's been able to be, it's been able to meet other village needs in the meantime. I mean, by being, providing parking storage for the auto dealerships, we were able to keep the auto dealerships here for a while, which was really great, and then...
They used the building for detailing and things like that.
Yeah, 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 which was great, and so, you know, it met our needs by keeping a good business here, and generated revenue, and then served Nutria's needs for an overflow lot. Again, we got revenue and it served Nutria's needs. So, but obviously, none of the original purposes for buying that parcel property were met. I mean, it wasn't beautified at all. I mean, it's still, there's, you know, it's all paved over completely, and so forth. So, I just, again, having been thinking about it for such a long time, I wanted to raise some issues about thinking about it at a higher level before we get down to the details of what, what we want to accomplish in the RFP. But looking at the fact that A, as a village, we own all of the property on the east side of the intersection. We own, you know, parking lot on the northwest, on the northeast corner, we own this parcel there, and then down, there's the village lot along the train tracks, right? You know, so...
So, it's, the, yeah, that long, narrow strip...
Right, that long, narrow strip.
Is employee parking.
Is employee, yeah, right, but it's, it's contiguous, so, you know. And so, I'm just raising the issue of, you know, is it worthwhile thinking about it over a longer view rather than just as this individual parcel, particularly because right across the street, we have, there's an empty, the empty former auto dealership, which is their, you know, potential redevelopment for somebody, and also where the now 7-Eleven is, and the cleaners, that's a pretty low intensive use of that lot. So, I'm just asking the bigger question in terms of what we want to do about it, because I was thinking that we had talked about sort of long-term lease rather than selling the property, because if we sell the property, you know, we lose total control if some redevelopment possibility should come up, that, you know, would it be more attractive? Could we do a bigger or better redevelopment project for the village if there was more property that we could put into play? And also, the question of, you know, the parcel as it is defined right now, is that really the parcel that we want to sell? I mean, we do have the option, because we own the contiguous part with the employee parking, you know, would we want to reconfigure it in any way? Again, may or may not be of issues, but it just seemed to me it was worthwhile asking. And so, and, and again, in terms of thinking about what we want to do, obviously, generating revenue for our capital investment would be a really good thing. The question is, relative to selling it versus leasing, you know, what are, what would the different revenue flows look like? You know, does there one advantage to us over another? Oh, and the final thing is, I think, I think we ought to think about the traffic patterns at that site in advance, because that's a pretty tricky intersection. Right now, because of, with the convenience store and the cleaners there, it's, it's a pretty high-volume turnover during rush hour, and it's a tricky intersection, everybody's coming out, and so, I'm just wondering in advance of consideration of what that site might be used for. There's been very little traffic generated on that site over the last 40 years, and it was a repaired garage, so there weren't a lot of cars coming in and out. It was, it was auto storage, or it was all-day parking. So, the question is, if it's a use that's high-volume and rush hour, we've got a lot of stuff going on there with that limited, in any way.
Penny, excuse me, trustee, I'm here. The site, when Fields Land Rover was there...
Yeah.
They were shuttling cars frequently?
Shuttling cars frequently and during rush hour.
During rush hour.
Because they were, you know, staging cars there for customers, they were detailing them, so we, we saw a lot of activity at that intersection, and it, while it was busy, it seemed manageable.
Excellent.
But then there were times where it was lower. For example, when Nutria was there...
Right.
They had parking, but they also had an automotive class in that building for a time.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good. If we have the experience, that's...
So, I would say at the peak of Land Rover is when it was at its busiest.
And it was.
Because they were parking almost on every single square inch of the property...
Right.
And they were shuttling cars all the time.
And, and again, I'm just asking because, again, having lived down there and seen a lot of stupid driving, it's people who are familiar with the lot. I just want to be really sure before we get a use in there, and then we run into traffic problems, so...
Well, I think the important thing to remember...
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be part of the, the project, that whoever would come in would have to do a traffic study?
Yes.
Right, I mean, wouldn't that be like...
I'm not disagreeing with that, but I'm just asking, I'm asking us to think about these things beforehand, because I hate to get us way down the road and then realize that, you know, it's just not compatible.
Well...
And if, if it is, it's great. I just, again, I'm just asking these questions in advance. I don't want to, I don't want to hold anything up. I just, there's things that cross my mind.
Yeah, you know, the, the interesting thing about the RFP process is we don't have to take any of them.
No, of course not.
You know?
Of course not.
And I, I, a lot, the beautiful thing is, is because it isn't just a flat-out bid. I mean, there's a, there's a huge qualitative piece to this.
Right.
Mainly, when the, if anybody responds, and they respond in a manner that we don't care for, we just say, we're not gonna do anything.
Right.
If we find maybe a, a use or two or three or four that are really interesting, and as a council, you guys all decide that, that from a policy perspective, it's, it's, we want to maintain control for the long-term future, because we can do that sort of thing and think beyond our time here, then we could do that. I mean, just because somebody comes in and says, I'll give you 100 bucks, doesn't mean that we can't turn around to them and say, well, you know what, we really don't want to sell it, we'd rather hold on to it. I think the whole idea was just to get the private, the private market's vision of what they see that site doing, so we can maybe have a better conversation about it, and...
I just, I wondered if we had got a, an estimate of the value of the property. Do we have anything currently?
Yeah, we do, but now, but, but here's the issue, is, is yes, we have an appraisal.
And how does that, you don't have to tell me what it is, but how does that rate compare to the original purchase price? Because I feel like...
Well, we can't, here, here's the problem, is, 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 you don't want to play poker with your cards up on the table.
Okay. Anyway.
Right? I mean, certainly, it's, 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 it's dangerous, because if we, if, if the appraised value is low based on what the market would bring us, we just shot ourselves in the foot. If the appraisal was high based on what the market might bring us, it could potentially eliminate really interesting uses that we would be willing to, you know, somehow subsidize through, through economics to get it there. So, yeah, I mean, we do have an appraisal, it will be shared in...
Okay, so that's a closed session.
Closed session, but I'd be really uncomfortable about throwing it into the RFP, because I think we just show our cards too soon.
No, right. I, I mean, I feel like, part of my view on this is that we have a fiduciary responsibility to the village to make sure that this land is not just laying in waste and losing value, and we made an investment in it, you know, many years ago, and under a set of circumstances that were different, and, you know, if this is an asset that we have, then we have a responsibility to do something with it, in my opinion, you know?
The, the three goals, my thinking is, you know, we want all three goals achieved. Monetize it, get some economic value, contribute to the pedestrian and roadway efficiency, and have some architectural nice design there, because it is a gateway. So, I would think that this RFP would see these goals, and whether someone leases it or buys it or whatever, we can look at it, but I think, I'm not sure the order with the environmental thing, that's a little, I don't know how that works.
It should be on a, it should have, actually, it should have been done, but it should, but now, it needs to be on a parallel path.
So, we figure it out, and it just seems like we should go ahead with the RFP?
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I'd like to add one possible additional thing, and it's just having spent a lot of time with our friends in the Environmental Forestry Commission. There's a couple of things about that site that could be interesting, and I'd be interested in seeing how possible private parties might be able to support a couple of things. One would be, you know, there's this discussion about the last mile, you know, and where it's right at a train station. Be interesting to see if we can get like an electric bike sharing rack there.
Oh, yeah.
Or Tesla supercharger, which Tesla pays for, and there are four spots right at the end of that lot, which is what they look for. So, it'd be interesting to see if that could be incorporated. So, I would add maybe as a fourth goal, something that's compatible with the village's sustainability and environmental plan.
Sure.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't limit it to those things, I'd be just interested in hearing.
Yeah, right, right, adding it as a, as a criteria.
I, I won't beat the environmental thing anymore than one more question. If during the whole process, turns out there is a big environmental problem, can we still lease the property to a developer that's a cash basis person, doesn't need a bank? Don't just...
Yeah, I mean...
Because if it turns out that it's a lot more than it's worth, then we're talking about nothing good.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing that prohibits somebody coming in from leasing it and saying, yeah, you know, there's an underlying environmental issue, but I'm willing, based on whatever use I propose, A, to take the risk, but also, you, the village, are gonna continue to own it, so therefore, you know, my, my exposure is minimal. I mean, it depends what the environmental issue is, and depends what the use is. But partly, if you, if you, you know, do your phase two ahead of time, and you can kind of better assess when you have proposals.
So, there's no residual liability to the village if there's something there and we put somebody on the property knowingly, even though there's a potential for...
I, I think it depends, I mean...
Exposure?
I think it depends what it is. I mean, obviously, if you, you know, if you had a daycare center that came in, you had a radioactive site. That's not the situation, nor do we know of. That's not the situation, nor do we know of any, any.
It's all that stuff that end in E-N-E that worry me, so.
Right, so, I mean, at the moment, you don't have any information that would indicate that it is any real environmental issue or one that's not easily rectified if it is, or that it would somehow prevent a use. So, uh, yeah, I think you, you are right to think about doing the phase two and, and figuring out, well, doing that part of the assessment because that'll help, not only then perhaps make it more attractive if you can get, you know, no further remediation, no better, but the other part is that at least you know what's there to resolve ambiguities with the proposer who might say, now that I know, I'm more comfortable to move ahead. I would also add that service stations, gas stations, all the time are repurposed and turned into other things. So I don't think, you know, and I'm not an environmentalist, but, you know, an environmental expert, but, uh, I don't think that there is something there that would be likely to cause a huge problem. It's just a matter of what you have to do to hand it off clean.
Well, again, it always goes back to, I know, I've known about properties that have contemporary stall problems. Whether it's cash block, there's no bank involved.
Right.
You're buying it as is and you move on.
Right, and I, and, right, and it depends what they want there, yep.
So is this something you can share with us? You said there's like a lot of interest or few people that had interest on basic types of uses there? Not that it matters on RFP right now.
I, I think we've heard similar things to what you've seen others do with our gas station and, you know, auto re- reuses. So we've had interest, I think, a lot for food and cafe, given the Nutri-R and the daytime population in that area. We've had a lot of people that just didn't want to disclose.
Sure.
They just wanted to know where we were at and, you know, we've had, I'd say, one more submittal that was a little more robust in terms of sending us some concepts. Um, but it's mostly been, you know, phone conversations.
Right.
Mostly been, I would say, food or cafe type uses. But like, like I said, I think that's an important, um, reality check in terms of the, the site visit, is the structure of the building and, you know, if someone's looking for the Elm train station to move in and open a cafe versus the condition of the building in ninety-three, I'm just not, not sure.
Yeah, that's, that's minor if it's.
Did anybody notice that the restaurant guys are hanging around for this conversation?
I'm just, is there anything we can do to prioritize Italian beef? It's sort of lacking on the North Shore.
One of the goals is to improve the pedestrian accessibility. Wasn't the intersection recently redone?
It was.
So what pedestrian accessibility are we thinking of going to improve?
Well, I think, I think a bit to Penny's point, if you activate that site, I think it changes the dynamics of how people are going to want to move in that area.
Okay, that would be changing sidewalks and crossings or?
I don't necessarily, I think, I think part of it is considering how pedestrians are going to access that site and how they're going to exist on the site. I don't think we're talking about redoing the intersection. I think that improved to Rob's point earlier about that site was still active with Land Rover and the intersection was a major improvement in terms of how pedestrians move, probably get to the bus stops that they're not, you know, out on the road.
Right.
So I think this is more how do you facilitate that to that site? Because right now, the site was an afterthought in terms of the actual intersection.
And I believe it'll be my last question. Is it a good idea to be doing what we're doing or trying to keep it that's available for the auto dealer across the street at some point? I don't know if it's worth trying to savor it, or maybe that property owner's one of the people looking at it, I'm.
Honestly, isn't this a terrible place to have a car dealership? I hate to say it.
So, um, so after.
Or similar use.
So after Land, Land Rover left, they came back, Fields came back with Maserati. And they, the discussions, um, continued with them potentially releasing that site for Maserati, but I don't think they ever hit the critical mass to take on the liability of the, of the rental again. So we just didn't see them, I mean, it went in fits and starts and then eventually they relocated to Island Park. So it's a tough location, um, in terms of, you know, getting the, the volume, the sales out of that site. Um, it did, uh, complement Land Rover, but I don't know that it complimented the boutique side of Maserati.
So, so Fields still has the lease on that property and so is, is the party, there are parties looking at that property, but given what they're looking to get in terms of lease rate, I think it's going to be a small market and a difficult fill. Um, you know, partly because of the side dynamics, partly because of what they're asking. Um, the other dynamic that they found is that, um, that 7-Eleven building is owned by Hoffman and that's up for sale.
So that goes to my question.
To use or to?
It's just been listed for sale.
That goes to the question about is there, has there been any use or any effort to look at, you know, a total redevelopment of that, that whole, that whole area, you know, all of those parcels?
This would be the opportunity for somebody to do that.
And conjunction. Open this up to the private sector because then some private.
Yeah, that's what I mean, right, so.
It's all private and Penny, I will tell you that.
So maybe that would see that.
Many parties and actually the, the broker representing the, uh, ownership on, on the, uh, on the Field site is here in the audience. And I've known of multiple uses that have had an interest in purchasing that property. And the current ownership has indicated, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong on this, that they don't have any interest in selling that thing at all, right? I mean, it's pretty much, there's no interest in, in.
Maybe they want to buy one across the street.
Fields leases the job.
No.
Okay, right, right.
Yeah, there, there, there's no interest in selling that property.
Yeah, so.
The, the other question I have, because I don't know much about real estate and, and, and it would be helpful for me as we're considering this stuff in terms of, um, for the village in terms of leasing versus selling and it, just because I'm not very knowledgeable in that area.
Well, we, we need to get a good financial analysis of that and what it means from a, you know, what the trade-offs are between control and, and dollars. I mean, obviously, it's a little site and, and.
Right.
You know, I mean, anybody who thinks there's going to be a windfall there is probably very misinformed because, you know, when you, when you paint a half-million dollar piece of property against a hundred-million-dollar budget, I mean, it really is a minimal amount. So that's the debate you guys have, have to have relative to what's the value of it, holding on to it versus a one-time hit. And we're going to have that conversation on multiple sites here in town ultimately, so.
Yeah, that would be.
It, it'll be a good policy conversation because, you know, there's people on both sides. I mean, some people say, take the money and run. Other people say, I don't know what it might be in a hundred years, but at least I'll leave it for somebody else to figure it out. And, you know, those are two really compelling arguments and they probably can be debated pretty well on either side, so.
Yeah, with Andy, we think we should go through the process and see what we get.
Yeah. I, that's kind of the, I think that's what we decided back in November, right? Was, let's see what this looks like. I continue to get, and, and, and matter of fact, I just met with, with, uh, uh, Rob and Megan last week, that I continue to field interest in other sites throughout the community that we control. A lot of really compelling, interesting ideas from a development standpoint. I'm not saying that they're the right thing, but there's a lot of interest in the properties that we own. And so understanding how the process works with a little piece like this, even if we don't sell it, at least we all get a sniff of how it works and what we can expect as we, as we go forward.
One last question relative to, um, the criteria. Relative to putting in some kind of a gateway, um, what do you call it? I don't, I don't know if there was any decision made in terms of what it would be. Would that be on that particular piece of property? What would that be in this, you know, should be, be more specific about that in, in the RFP criteria? Or is that sort of a?
You know what'd be really cool is, you know, when you go into Humboldt Park and there's that big arch that goes across Augusta?
Yeah, they were talking about that.
With the Puerto Rican flag and everything? We should do something like that there that is.
Wasn't that, Scott's out here right now.
Yeah.
Folk market.
Old market, like square.
Yeah, see, I mean.
Cause that's in the goals.
It'd be cool.
Be fitting the gateway location.
So the, the possibility of doing gateway signage.
Yeah.
Uh, on maybe the northern edge of that site.
Right.
Uh, is a possibility, but you could also, you know, be part of the RFP process to, you know, get the feedback from the market and say, where could that work? Cause obviously, they're going to want signage for a business if that's what's going to go there.
Right, right, right.
So how could you kind of do both and, and make it look good?
Yeah, so, yeah, so I don't know if we need to be more specific about that or not, but that was, that.
Okay.
Does, uh, does, uh, I couldn't tell from the zoning listing whether or not a drive-through coffee shop was allowed at that spot.
Nope. That'd also be tough on twelve thousand square feet.
Yeah.
With stacking and parking in a, in a building.
But Penny made a good point.
Well, there's that tiny one off, you know.
About, about the parking lot leading into it could be a.
And the drop-off onto Winnetka Avenue.
Would it make more sense to make the access through, uh, further south through the parking lot? Um, because we obviously, since we own all of that, we could, we could do that.
Cause that's what I was thinking, it's coming in on Green Bay and then off, onto Winnetka Avenue.
Um, there's, there's an elevation issue there, but, but if you could enter further south, it might, might make things better on that intersection.
Yeah, you have to look at it.
Yeah.
In terms of the traffic circulation on the site, some of that would be driven by the use.
Right, right.
Um, but to my knowledge, I don't think the, the drive-through would, could fly.
So we aren't going to get a Portillo, Portillo so I can get my beef sandwiches and french fries?
Yeah, the order box would be down.
For my Culvers?
What about Al's?
With the Hells?
Order Italian beef in Elmwood Park, it's in a building about that size, it's the best Italian beef.
They drive your line and start in Kenilworth.
Winnetka's hungry, right? Isn't that what the conclusion was?
Yeah, no, it did, apparently so.
Butter burger.
All right, we still have to go to the close session.
Uh, yeah. I would like to open it up to the, I'll open up the microphone to the, the public. Would anybody like to, uh, share their ideas on this with us? Mike, you're a busy guy tonight.
I'm a busy guy.
So if I were in your shoes, I would be doing exactly what you're doing. Let's put it out to market and let the market tell us what they're willing to do there. Well, that's how real estate's been going in this town for twenty years and it's not been going very well. So when we decided to do minnows with Eric and his wife, we had a use for that building when we bought it. We didn't just do it for whatever. The, the next building, uh, and there's a bunch of us, Al's done the same thing and, and Max Talib, there are a bunch of buyers out there that are interested in improving the community. You have a unique position right now because you have some assets. So why don't you think about what you want? Because it's a lot of work to put together an RFP response and it's a lot of money. And we've got other things we're doing right now. So you want the best offer, give people an idea of what you want. And we're all community members. We're not doing these investments because we're going to make a ton of money. I mean, I'm retired, you know, we're doing this to improve the community. So why can't we work together? And just sending out an RFP doesn't really feel like we're working together unless it's a very specific RFP. So that's my only comment on it.
You know what's interesting though, Mike, is that most, as I mentioned, I've, 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 I've heard from other people about other ideas on other village-owned properties. And with the exception of the, the obvious ones, there, there was a handful of really interesting, unique ideas that I don't think anybody at this table would have ever come up with.
But can't you sift through those ideas here and say what you, where you're leaning or what you'd like to do or where you'd like it to go?
That's, that's, that's a good question, but, you know, that's where the market comes in, is the creativity of, of what the imagination of those folks bring. Sure, there's been several coffee operations that have come there. It's a no-brainer in that location, right? I mean, uh, I mean, you could do that one falling out of bed, but when it comes to something really unique and special and different that might really become, uh, the sort of thing that is particularly Winnetka, it's a little bit more difficult to articulate there, at least I think amongst the seven of us here.
Well, I, and I certainly didn't think of an Italian restaurant in a, in a garage. That was Eric. I can't take any credit for that. So I do agree that it's a mix, but why don't, I, I guess, we've had these conversations, Chris. I mean, we're competing, our real estate values are plummeting. The millennials don't want to live here. Everyone from my old office moves up here, moves up to Womet because it has more of a downtown. You've got people who are willing to invest in their communities, you've got assets. There's got to be some way to work closer together. I guess that's the only thing that I'm saying. And I'm not saying the RFP process is a bad idea. I'm just saying when you get those responses or, or the more direction you can give is the more inspiration for people to actually participate in the process.
I agree.
I don't want to do a bunch of drawings and spend fifty thousand dollars doing the site plan for something that's nothing you want. And it, or, or it's not going to benefit the community.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that's the only thing that I would say, is there some way to work and, you know, it's pretty easy of me to come up here and ask all these questions and not have answers, but that's the, that's the only thing that I would say. I, I just feel like we're kind of, not in crisis mode, but we have a real issue up here with making this place the kind of community that people want to come and they're demanding more in amenities than we have right now. So what are those amenities? And, and think about it and put it out to the community because we're willing to invest. I just don't even know, you know, I don't even know. Restaurant's easy, but we've got two, three really good ones and we've got more coming online, so.
It's not nearly enough, though.
What?
I mean, honestly.
But what else?
And he's going to be hungrier.
No, I honestly, you know, I've got a family, four kids. We go out a lot. I'll tell you, the major problem in this town is that there's not enough in this town to go out to eat. I love your restaurant, it's great, but can I get a table on a moment's notice? No, because it's, it's great.
Yeah.
Um, same with Fred's.
Right.
You know, so there aren't enough.
Fred's owners are too.
Yeah.
Right, and, you know, but if you want ideas, we have a ton of ideas about things.
We did a whole downtown master plan across it.
And things that could come in. I mean, we don't have, you know, a, a really great spa situation in Winnetka, right? You know, chill downtown or all these places where people go and freeze themselves after working out, you know?
No.
It's a thing, right? So, but there, those things, you know, our hope is that if we put out this, this siren call for people to bring their ideas, I mean, it has to make money for someone to want to invest in it.
That's right.
And we can't dictate that. So I feel uncomfortable saying to someone, we absolutely have to have X business here and nothing else because maybe someone can't make money doing that.
It doesn't have to be that big. I mean, and candidly, when we evaluated, my wife and I evaluated the investment, we just said, you know, if we can make a seven, eight percent return and invest in our own community, then that's what we're going to do.
Yep.
We own student housing in Arkansas, for God's sake.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, why aren't we investing here? So it doesn't have to make a ton of money. There are a lot of people out here willing to invest with ideas that make sense. And I think a fault of the landlords in this town, or a lot of them have convoluted tax situations, they just don't care to sell their property and that's a lot of it. But they're not wed to what goes into the community. And it just seems like David's group has been great, it sounds like you have a good team now. Start thinking about how to translate that master plan into spaces that you have and put it out there to the community to invest in it, I think will respond.
That's a great idea.
Or I think I'm picking a use. All the uses in that, in the classified zoning district, those are all fair game as far as I'm concerned.
Mm-hmm.
So we.
I don't even limit myself to those.
When we take one of those uses and say, oh, we want this use, now we've just cut down our bidders from a hundred to, to one.
Right.
And we're also open to something possibly not even in there as a, as a permitted use. Bring us an idea for something that might be way out there. We're not the business people creating the, what's going to be in a spot and how to make that.
Somebody's got to bridge that gap.
And the good news is, Mike, is, you know, I've been responding to RFPs my whole career. And if I spent, if I spent five thousand dollars on this RFP, I'd be overspending. I mean, th- this is not the sort of a, of a, of a request that requires grandiose vision and hide. It really is conceptual, you know? Give us pictures of something similar to what's been done that, that would be proposed. You know, maybe have somebody whip up a sketch or two envisioning what sort of, it could be really easy and really down and dirty cheap. Now, clearly, before council makes a final decision, we'd want to sit down with that individual and get them to vet their, their vision a little bit better. But for this RFP, I, I, I don't think it's all as intensive as, as what you, you're suggesting, honestly. And we wouldn't expect that either. And Megan, I'm, I'm.
Our intent was to be more entry-level and approachable so that we got more rather than less.
Yeah.
And then I think we can always go back and ask for more once we've seen the ideas and the things that you want to spend more time vetting. So we didn't want anyone to get this and say, I can't participate because the bar is too high.
Too high, yeah.
Send something in. Just given the conversations we've had, I think you're going to get a diversity. And I think if you, if you have too many submission requirements or it's perceived to be too much process, I think a message is Winnetka is open for business. And having something like this on the street that someone who's a business owner or developer can pick up and say, oh, I can, I can do that to get in the door, I think is the.
Yeah, I think, I think we vehemently agree with you, you know, and I think we're trying to.
Sign here.
Like, we want the same thing that you want.
Like, we want the same thing that you want. We're trying to get something that fits the village, that it makes it more dynamic. I think we all are feeling really sensitive to the deadness, you know, especially in Hubbard Woods, right? Where there's nothing. So, you know, we...
There's something up there.
Well, there's Minos. There's a lot of empty.
Compel the guys who are sitting on the real estate to sell, that's a whole nother topic, I know. But compel the guys who are sitting on the sideline to sell their stuff. We'll take it.
In real estate terms.
If I were King.
I agree with you, though. We're trying to...
Thank you.
Can I ask, if you're thinking about...
Thanks, Mike. Would anybody else like to share with council?
Sorry. My apologies.
Come on up, Al.
Al Steppen, five seven four Green Bay Road, Fred's developer, investor owner. Your Phase Two should have borings that go out in I dot road.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Your Phase Two should have borings that go out at the I dot road of Green Bay Road. So that should be relatively readable. Will those be made accessible during the RFP process or prior to?
Probably not.
Probably not. Okay. Will the village indemnify any lease or, or purchase of the property?
No.
We don't know?
Not yet.
Okay. That'd be obviously, you're probably getting chain entitled for this kind of projects having just gone through it. I've been to the site. I did a walk-through around it. You're, I'm assuming that you're not going to get additional curb cuts there because it's an I dot road, you're with a hundred fifty feet...
Tell us what you need.
Pardon?
I would say, tell us what you need.
You're next to the intersection there. So I dots can give you a hundred fifty feet back. You've got one entrance, let's right in, right out. So that may make the case that you may not park on site like I did on Fred's. Then you create a wall around it for pedestrian-friendly. I'm also assuming that your north corner, you're going to want a straight visual corridor because you're not going to put out the pedestrian traffic and the kids, the influx there in the elevation.
Wait a minute, what, what do you say?
Your north end of the site.
Yeah.
You're going to want to have that unobstructed and have a clear sight view because of all this, the student traffic pattern.
And there's a wall there, right?
There, it's a delevation decrease.
Right.
So your corridor is going to be a little bit off and that's going to become nonusable space, which you're probably going to want to do open space requirement to make it more of an open space area, maybe a patio. That building is definitely a scrape. There's no doubt about it. Walk through it, there's a whole ton of site work. That's probably a two million dollar project, just so everybody's aware, a million dollar core, million dollar probably tenant improvement allowance and then a couple hundred thousand site work, just so you guys are also sharing that information. Metro rail issues. Do you know if there's any metro rail issues in conjunction with that site or any setbacks that may be designed for a new building? Because of that property line to the east, probably shares that metro boundary, which could be problematic. So there'll probably be a significant setback. I'm just guessing, but, you know, it's existing structure. That's kind of it. Just initial thoughts.
Lot of good questions.
Yeah.
Share your ideas and we'll see if we can, and, and if your vision catches our, our attention, we will roll up our sleeves and start to work through those issues. That's the whole idea.
Last question is for Mike Levine. Mike, is there any, is that existing lease from Fields Company still in play? Are there any first options or refusals?
It's an eight-year sub.
Pardon?
It's an eight-year sub.
So if we go through the process, someone get buckets from the end from the current leaseholder, correct? Or no?
No.
Is Fields, is it done on that property?
Oh, you, Al, you're getting the properties mixed up. Our property is free and clear.
Go across the street with Field, sublease status or there was a lease there in place at one point, correct?
We don't have an agreement with, with Fields anymore.
Okay. So then if you go through the, you know, the dog and pony of the, of the RFP, you're not going to be kind of suspended or...
No, we have complete site control and ownership.
Maybe worth going through. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? All right, we'll close public comment. Any, any last thoughts, comments, ideas? I have some wordsmithing, but I'll just shoot it over to you. It's just bits and pieces.
The live is totally paved over, correct?
Yes. Except maybe behind the building up to Overpass.
Yeah.
I think those are, it's open...
From the bank.
Is there, is, I mean, that's obviously a very prominent spot. And again, there was interest initially in trying to get more green in there.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that's a goal. You know, to me, I would love to have something green there because it is such a prominent spot and it really affects the whole visual nature that I don't know if we can put that in as, you know, that's something that we would like to have reconsidered. Because I really just am not thrilled about that, that it's... Does that mean that? Well, I, I thought something more strongly stated than that would, would, to me, because I mean, that's, that's a goal that we have and I'm like, why not put it out there?
Something other than highly attractive landscape design?
Yeah, you know, more, more, you know, green elements or whatever. I mean, I, you know, who knows how that would be done, but, and I don't know if it would be something that we would maybe want to go into partnership, but I mean, you know, if there are any possibilities that we could be creative about it, if that's our goal, but it would make the project more expensive because...
You know, sometimes, and it's not unusual, Penny, where developer or, or the proposer will come in and say, I'll do this, the village does that.
Which would be, you know, again, because I, I personally think on behalf of the village, I think that's an important goal for somebody who's coming in. That would not be their business goal, but that's, that's a village goal. So I don't know how that could or should be incorporated. But again, I, I stated all these things in what I said earlier, just because I wanted to get out there on the table before any particular use comes in so that it's, you know, whatever it is that I, the questions I'm asking is not related to a particular person or, or proposal, but, but just in general.
It sounds to me, Chris, that there's a little bit of more legwork to identify sort of the characteristics of this property. And I thought the question, I thought about the question about the rail.
Right.
Whether there's an encumbrance we have on that. So, you know, you've got the issue of the structural integrity of the building.
Right.
You've got the, the possible environmental review. You got the I dot issues, potent, you know, sort of, I mean, do we need to get our arms around the property a little more before...
No, because usually what will happen is in the pre, the pre-bid, all these questions come out. Al will show up and he'll ask all those questions again, right, Al? And I hope you show up and ask all those questions again. But they'll show up and they'll ask questions and Megan will take them all back and then she'll issue an addendum to the RFP that says, here's the answers to all the questions that were asked at the RFP. And sometimes the answer will be, we don't have it yet. Like, you know, what's the status of the Phase Two? I mean, it might be that we've engaged a consultant, but it hasn't gone forward, you know, but issues like the railroad setbacks and things like that, they can dig in and they'll respond to those questions as part of a wholehearted, you know, kind of a complete addendum.
But you know those questions are going to come up.
Oh, right.
I mean, obviously, they've already come up. And so is that a parallel track that we are...
Well, the environmental is a huge one. Yeah, I agree.
Well, first, since we don't know of any encumbrances that the railroad has on that front.
Okay, good. Awesome.
So I did check that with Steve. It's not a way that I can...
Okay.